All right, well, let's start moving through the agenda here. I'll call the roll. George, I'll accept a thumbs up to indicate that you are here. George is here. Regina?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Regina is here. I am here. We are missing Mike Favreau and Kendra Dickinson, who may be joining us depending on tech and a sick family member. So, but with three people, we have a quorum. I do not believe we've seen a final draft of the meeting minutes from April 8th. So we can table that until our next meeting. The next thing we have is a continued public hearing of 357 Sterling Road. They have requested a continuance until our next meeting, which is June 10th. Can I have a motion to do just that?
I'll make a motion to do just that. George, if you want a second, thumbs up. There you go.
George has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote. Regina?
Yes.
George?
George, thumbs up.
George, can you hear us? Okay, got the thumbs up.
There's a delay, Frank.
Yeah, I think so too. Must be strange internet over there on that side of the hill. So I also vote yes. So three, nothing to continue the hearing until our next meeting at June 10th. Okay, Wayne, you're up.
Wow, that's great. I thought it'd be waiting hours for you guys.
Hey, it's 7:06. We, you know, we made it happen for you.
So I don't have a big presentation because I sort of figured this is mostly about giving you a chance to chat about the plan. So I'm going to put the plan up. This is basically just what you have. I just want to walk you through just a few things if I could, if that works for you. So the first, again, you have this, so I apologize. This may not be the easiest screen to read, but you know, the survey was interesting. You guys had a big sample size, which I liked. And the sample size was well distributed around Lancaster, which was great. It definitely skewed towards older residents. But to some extent, frankly, your demographics skewed to older residents. The survey was a little bit older than the town as a whole, but not horribly so. You know, the first question, we just asked people to define and the, all the raw results are in the plan. So you see all that. I'm just going to show you some of the highlights. So we asked people to tell us, you know, how do you define Lancaster? No big surprises. Sense of community, you know, quiet residential, small, people know each other. No real surprise in this part. Later on in the open comments, there was more negativism than I would have expected, more negative comments than we, than I heard at the public forums. Most, and there were a lot of negative comments. There's still a minority, but there were a lot of them. And when I get to economic development, I'm going to highlight a little bit where that stuff comes from. Overall, that chart, which you can't really read here, is, you know, we the, we just classified which comments were positive, which were negative, and how people described Lancaster, and far more people described it as, you know, very positive, positive or neutral. And then some people described it had negative comments, but certainly the majority of what people thought about the community was positive. Again, I'm not going to throw other comments. Yeah.
Just curious, and I know you're going to move into this, but when we talk about the positive and negative comments, do we have an age range of, like more positive came from this age range and more negative came from this age range? And where I'm going with that is, like, are the under thirty-somethings finding more negatives? And the over forty-somethings are finding more positive type question?
So we didn't do sentiment that way because frankly, this is an automated process and that would require hand coding. So that would be difficult. What we did do in the survey, so cross, some of you know surveys. For those who do, I apologize for repeating this, but cross tabulations, where we look at two different variables and compare them together. For everything, I did cross tabulations, both on where people live and for age. So not for sentiment, not the open-ended, but for the questions. And all the results were surprisingly the same regardless of age and regardless of where people lived. Except, and this was a very big except, except for economic development, did people want more business and commercial? So that was, the reason that's the only one I reported in the survey.
My next question, is it possible, and I know we only have so much time, is it possible to get that into an age range? Like, are we seeing people over a certain age want X for development for the town, where people under a certain age range want X for development to the town?
Yes, very easy. I did that quickly and the numbers weren't that, which why I didn't report that. But yeah, I'll do that. I'll do that supplemental. Okay, so, so let me go in. So again, I'm not going through all the comments. These are there. I'm happy to go through them. So remember, we asked people to say, which was your highest priority on a scale of one to five, or if there were six variables, one to six? So I'm just in these tables. I'm just reporting people's priorities. You know, and obviously some of the questions, like there were a few people who didn't know what DCAM was, which is my fault for not describing the parcel. But most people knew that and you can see their priorities here. That, you know, the highest priority people had was Atlantic Union College redevelopment. The negatives comments were just saying, hey, we don't control that. You know, we chose to report that because this is a 20-year plan and at some point, you know, seven-day dentists are going to want to move forward. So not surprising, people generally liked the redevelopment. They liked Atlantic Union. They liked the center. They liked the town green. They liked the walkable village, although I think they didn't always understand what that was. And then the specific comments, the sample size, you know, you'd expect the individual comments had very low priority because sometimes only one person made them, so that those can't be that high. As I go on to this. So for housing, so I was surprised, the, you know, we had a little discussion at the last planning board meeting about where would people rank protecting the physical patterns of the neighborhood? And I would have thought that would be really high on the list, and it was really high on the list. But even higher, although very small, these are really small differences. The top priority for housing was more flexibility for smaller housing units. People get that you have a lot of, you know, 21, 24, 2600 square foot homes, and that makes it hard for someone who's aging in place and might be a single. So the top priority was more flexibility. The second was existing neighborhoods. The third was what we tend to call attainable housing, lower cost market rate housing, which often overlaps with smaller units. And then still a lot of support for affordable housing, deed restricted, the thing which you pass to bond bill for, or CPA for, I forgot which. But that was the lowest of those three priorities. Doesn't mean people didn't want it, but it was lower. Economic development, as I say, this is the only one where in the cross tabs, we had a significant difference. And I think we can solve all these. So, you know, the, it was really about the commercial and industrial tax base. North Lancaster, you know, who's getting the warehousing, getting the construction. They were overwhelmed, or not overwhelmed, but they were far less supportive of that as a goal. I think this gets what, I think what a master plan is all about. When we get into the weaves, I think there's zoning solutions for that, you know, technical performance standards. I think, I mean, to me, I didn't hear anything personally that makes me think that industrial, commercial tax base shouldn't be a very top priority. But I think there may be zoning issues in terms of lighting and noise and buffers that are worth considering, the zoning that couldn't solve some of those issues. As I say, this is the only one with big cross tabs, although I will, as Regina asks, you know, do the, the cross tabs for age. Economic development, I'm sorry, natural, natural cultural resources. You know, everything that had to do with celebrating what's there was really high. I think there's still a story in the community that they didn't understand that Devon's is not going to be surplus anytime soon, if ever. So a few people in the comments still remembered whatever the conversation was decades ago, or I don't know how many years ago about some of the land coming to the town. Invasive species were pretty low priority, but again, those are pretty tightly put together. So we, it's not like anything was really low in the process. Natural and cultural resources, certainly interest in open space. It was scattered because we asked for, we, we put farmland, the open space plan, and valuable areas is different questions that sort of split people's support. There were a few people in the comments who said we can't afford any of these things. A lot of, a lot of the negative comments were that. We shouldn't be paying for gold-plated schools. I'm going to fix income. I can't afford it. So a lot of the negative comments were really about any spending whatsoever. They weren't specific about any particular category of things.
So Wayne, I'm going to ask the same question and not beat a dead horse, but again, is there a way to put the age demographic in?
Yeah. I can do, that's all very easy. I can do, I can do each one of these if you want by age or, okay, yeah.
And Frank, Brian, George, tell me if you think that's wrong, but I mean, we want our young people to be able to live in Lancaster. So if we're hearing that from the young people, and I think a lot of people are going to assume it's the elderly, but I think we're going to see a really mix in this.
I'm happy to do that. Just, just the caution is it's a tiny end, a tiny sample size.
Understood. Yeah, no, totally understood.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, are you sure there actually are young people who live in Lancaster?
Think so. Other than the ones that mommy and daddy gave them the house. Yeah. I know, I know. I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping, yeah.
Interestingly, you know, the people under 18, we had some, and they were probably people who came to the high school forum who did the survey, which is still a minority. I think we had zero people 18 to 25 or something like that. But at least, yeah.
I keep thinking about that one young woman who came to the Nishoba Forum, that she is what, five generations Lancaster?
Yep.
And that is inspirational. That is what we want to retain. And we might make, make sure she can continue living in Lancaster. Five generations in.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and, yeah, so I'll definitely do that. And I can send that off to you. You don't need to wait for the next plan revision. We can do it. Sustainability, likewise, general support. The lowest priority was specifically making Lancaster carbon neutral by 2050. This may be an education piece. 2050 is just the state's goal. So that's sort of in some ways a statewide goal. In theory, if you do nothing, the state's going to help you get there. And so I think people just wanted to focus more on their, their issues. I was a little surprised that people understood zoning and regulations enough to understand the impact it could make, you know, just sort of if sustainability becomes a lens for thinking about your zoning. Services and facilities, Town Hall was the highest priority people had. We asked the question, the way we heard of the first public forum, we were testing it, which was getting it back on the market. No judgment here whether it's the town or a nonprofit or for-profit, just getting it into productive use. We didn't drill down, so I can't tell you what people wanted of those things. Life cycle assessment is a little one of those inside baseball, but it's, you know, you're not going to suddenly spend millions of dollars of taxpayer money to make your buildings carbon neutral if it won't pay. The life cycle assessment is just thinking about the life of what you do and how that works. If, I don't know who prepared the RFP for the plan, but one of the things the RFP asks for is, you know, a methodology for cost benefit analysis for future capital projects. So that's why we spent some time talking about life cycle analysis and what a cost benefit analysis would look like. So, you know, that was people's interest. There's still an interest in capital investments, but just sort of in that context, I think, of the overall piece. And then service, I'm sorry. Mobility, definitely by far, people, and these were almost ranked the same, but walkable villages centers, walk, you know, allowing walkability and bikeability. The goal on the draft plan, which I think is clear, is not being anti-car, just allowing bikes and peds as a, as equal status. There were a couple of comments about, oh, bicycles in the streets are horrible because it slows down cars and bicycles shouldn't be here and they don't pay taxes. But generally, that was a pretty strong, you know, goal is sort of how do you make it more bike-friendly and walk-friendly?
Yep, love that one.
So I'm not going to, you know, you already heard, we already went over previously the, both the town we love, which I, you know, stole from the one you did, whatever it was, 15 years ago and just updated it. So there's nothing new here. Executive summaries, just sort of the goals which we had by the two plans ago. This is in essence, what we tested in the last public forum. And except for that same comment about Lancaster being, and North Lancaster being beaten up for economic development, we didn't hear any negative comments in the public forum about those overall goals. So we sort of didn't change the goals from the previous part. And then, you know, yes, this, this is the same map it was before, but we highlighted the areas with some of the greatest opportunity. This is one of the maps or cleaning up for the final part of the plan, but and then I won't go through this all, but basically we took the goals previously and we just spelled them out. So, you know, what does that mean? So I'm not going to go through these all, but, you know, what does it mean to simplify your zoning regulations and strengthen the site plan review standards? So we gave some descriptions. I gave some specific language about financial performance guarantees. Probably frankly, a little more detail than anything else in the plan, only because you all were talking about it at the last, at the last meeting. But just generally trying to think about, you know, what are the, how would you put these goals into operation? So that's what all these things are. The two boxes I put in the plan were really just to highlight those most controversial aside, the, the North Lancaster. And so it's, you know, this is more important among equals. And so just talking about how is it you could have it all, which I think is a fair goal to have. There's, there's no reason you shouldn't be there, but it does mean you may want to think more about truck traffic and all those sort of details. So, you know, some, you know, again, there's sort of comments that are not at the level of master plan, the more detailed. Some people hated the gazebo and the town commons. They made comments on that. We weren't generally looking at that level of comments, obviously, but the Atlantic Union, as I said, the biggest negative wasn't that people didn't want it developed. They just didn't think it was ever going to happen in the process. There's skepticism. The, the, you know, I've been calling the Main Street Village in South Lancaster, for lack of a better term, by the bridge. That one probably was the least understood because no one saw it as being a walkable area. But some of the comments people seemed to get that you basically couldn't do this now, even if somebody wanted to. And I think there was some conversation at the last planning board meeting about parking. So I tried to clarify, walkable village doesn't necessarily have any less parking whatsoever. It's just the parking might, if someone's building a new building, the parking might be behind or next to, or at least allow that, allow a building closer to the street. And then, you know, some discussion about sewer capacity, right? If you're, if your biggest limit to growth in the sewer area is the lack of sewer capacity, more discussion about inflow, infiltration, water saving. So you can think about how do you free up capacity? So it's the same flow into Clinton, but you can serve new uses in the process. And then I think I put this under housing. You know, thinking about would the sewer commissioners work with you to prioritize who gets that flow? If it's mixed use in Lancaster Center, and if it's affordable housing and mixed use, you could in theory say that's where you're willing to dedicate the flow to and not new suburban housing, or not. That would be up to you and the sewer commissioners, but that's a potential. One thing that potentially would help, help the planning board going forward is, you know, the plan, as you all know, gets adopted by you. You're doing three public forums. I always encourage you to advertise one of those as a public hearing, but state law doesn't require that, because you can vote on this without a public hearing, just as a planning board meeting. But it's worth having the plan as being one of the criteria for special permits. That, you know, you want a developer to look at the plan and tell the planning board. Doesn't mean you kill a project because it's not in the plan, but it just adds that to the lens you can look at. It gives you more tools, frankly, for doing. So again, I'm skipping through some of this. You're doing a separate housing needs assessment, so I didn't go into credible detail. But I did, I like this chart. I wanted to specifically highlight for people who don't get some of the source, the housing crisis, which is sort of two things. One is housing inflation has gone up much more dramatically than overall inflation. This would be true anywhere in the Commonwealth. This is not unique to Lancaster. But, you know, a house that sold for $129,000 in 1994, that today sells for almost half a million. If it had gone up the same price as white bread, it would only be $273,000. And that's been true my entire life. This is not a new thing, but it's only what makes housing worse. And then add to that that family size is smaller and we're all living longer, which is good, but it means that more of us frankly are living as by ourselves in our big houses. So those are sort of the two biggest sources that I saw of a lack of attainable housing. It's hard to have smaller units. So, you know, some specific suggestions for zoning solutions for doing that. You have a lot of things in your zoning. You have inclusionary housing. You have accessory dwelling units. But you still have some incentives for someone to a bigger unit. So I tried to build that into there. Economic development, again, some background and demographics. But I think, again, to this, in the, the box that I highlighted, just a little more of that, how do we get all these things? How do we, you know, think about encouraging economic development a way that wins over people? And one is, one of the big areas consensus was helping local businesses. And I know you're a small town with a lot of staff. And I know the economic development committee hasn't, hasn't been active for a long time. But literally, you know, planning a schedule of talking to every local business every few years is really useful to help, to first understand what local businesses need. And second, you know, be able to respond to them. And if, if you did reform your economic development committee, that could be an important charge for them. So, you know, how do you grow existing businesses? You know, it takes a lot of small businesses to equal a million or two million square foot warehouse. But you also get those businesses with very little adverse impacts. And then for those big projects, again, how do you think about regulatory things so that people like those things? So that's sort of the main piece. Again, more details in the chapter I will go through. The natural resources was mostly just about, you know, access to the river, both physical access for people who want to walk or canoe and visual access. Thinking about the South Post, even if nothing's going to happen for a long time, maybe there's little pieces that someday might be surplus.
So Wayne. Yes, Regina, going back to the river. How much feedback did you get about people who wanted to see the river? Or, or wanted walking past along the river?
There was no. Yeah, that was one of the highest ranked things in this category. And it was one of the most commonly cited things in the comments that people want a lot. They didn't tend to break down.
Like, is there a way to like pull that out that, like, what was the biggest thing? And I, I really think so many people, like, there's people who don't even realize that that is an option.
Yep.
Going forward.
Regina, let me look at that. I don't, nothing stood out in my mind, so I'm not sure there's enough, but I'm happy to go through the data as soon as there.
Okay, thank you.
You know, again, the South Post, you know, maybe this little slivers, where I took this picture from, you know, in a place where maybe there's some sliver they give to you someday. And some of these things are just, you know, a 20-year plan, probably nothing's going to happen. The stuff moves incredibly slowly. But it's always worth being at the table. You just, you never want to give up the conversation.
Right. And the only thing, the only thing that worries me about South Coast, and maybe I'm a little too old for this, but we've gone through this so many times. We've had citizens who have gone onto South Coast and picked up the wrong item. And bad things happen. So I, I really want to stay away from South Coast ever being an option that taxpayers think they're going to get. Like, it, it's a pipe dream. It really is a pipe dream.
Wayne, I, I certainly wish Regina were wrong, but the Department of Defense has been promising to give that land back to Lancaster immediately after the war since 1917. It's 107 years later and it's no closer back. I mean, the issue is, they already did do the give back. But you weren't part of it. You know, our land was the contaminated land, so that didn't get to become the community of Devon's. That just got, that just became what it is.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. I mean, maybe.
I would have to, I would have to agree that, because basically you're saying, oh, give us a hazardous waste site.
Right, right. That's fair. Okay. All right. So let me, let me revise that. I mean, I think it's still important for at least the town officials, you know, a couple of boards and, and the town administrator to come to like when there's a public forum on the cleanup, just to make sure you're not left behind at the table. But I'll make sure it doesn't. There's no expectation you get it. Okay.
Yeah, agree.
And I, and I do think that the Oxbow, maybe that, maybe, you know, getting a little more land along the river, the Oxbow might get. Because, you know, sometimes national wildlife actually gets land that's never going to be open to the public, like even when there's bombs on it. Like, you know, near me, there's a place where they, they, there's a military base near me where they're managing for grasshopper sparrows in the middle of the runways. You know, people aren't going there, but they're still managing it. So it could be that.
Right. So, so I will say DOD manages the wildlife. And I do know they have the turkey hunt there, so you can get a permit. But we, we don't want to give the expectation to the town that they will ever be able to stroll.
Yep.
Like up Shirley Road and go into that area. It will never happen in our lifetime.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, I didn't, for the most part, you obviously have a separate wayfinding consultant. So it wasn't, you know, a lot of the celebration that's, that people reported on is probably going to be represented in the wayfinding program. So you, you may try to think about that when you have the combination about wayfinding, are there any more opportunities to highlight? You know, at, you know, visual access or historic access interpretation. And obviously, no surprise, there's a lot of alignment between Native American sites and the river as well. So as you think about preservation, you can highlight those things. So open space and recreation. Again, I did less on this because you have a pretty good open space plan. It's only six and a half years old. And because that expires into this year, I assume you're going to be revising the open space plan hopefully next year. So I just did a couple of markers for things to think about in the plan. You know, and open space plans are critical because that's the key to getting a lot of, three different major grant programs the Commonwealth has. You have to have an open space plan for doing it. Then sustainability and resilience, I already sort of talked about this earlier on in the process. Greenhouse gas footprints themselves, you know, I asked people, should the town as a whole be carbon neutral by 2050? Should town buildings be carbon neutral by 2040? No opposition, but not a high priority compared to other things. But more priority, just thinking about what pencil's at, what will pay for itself for buildings that, you know, there are a lot of investments that wouldn't make sense if you needed a 10-year payback, the way a private sector might do. But it'd make perfect sense if you're talking about a building envelope that's going to be around for 20 years or 30 years. So I'm representing that in here. And some of that's going to show up later in facilities. And then, as I mentioned, because the RFP specifically asked for cost benefit analysis and procedures, not just recommendations, sort of gave this, this, the framework, this table 10.1 of how would you look at capital improvements from a climate assessment standpoint? What are the questions to ask people for doing? And you can just think of this as, you know, when public works comes before town meeting, there's a tendency to ask for as little as possible to get it funded. But sometimes a little more money might actually save money in the long run. And so that's what you want to do for an assessment. Is, is that true? Maybe it's not true, but that's. And then, you know, public facilities, this I mostly got from you all and from Brian, but what are the public facilities? But what are the public facility needs? What are you working on? What are the challenges? Obviously, you know, there's never enough money. These are long term things. But since the plan should be good for ten to twenty years, we just want to document what these things are and to support those conversations going forward. So trying to put down what I could. Schools, I know is a separate process, so I spent less time on that, but just sort of thinking about those things. And then a little, again, I say, a little more in cost benefit analysis. The the case study I give was just about Mast dot. So it's nothing to with Lancaster. But it's about how Mast dot used to always rate roads, road investments based on number of crash reductions and cost per per mile traveled. And then when they started doing cost benefit analysis, suddenly changed all the formulas. Because things like this example specifically around abouts, roundabouts are more expensive to build and less expensive to maintain. And the day they started doing cost benefit analysis, it changed what they focused on. So it just, it's a useful framework to think about going forward. Circulation with with that in mind, the normal way you prioritize road improvements, I think, should remain. It's where the most crashes. And of course, that's important. But we also spent some time looking at roads that are really not safe intersections. They may be very low crash rates because so few cars go through them. But if it's less than a right angle, you're more likely to get crashes. The numbers don't look like much because, again, not many cars, but often these are really inexpensive investments. And some of the investments are literally cans of paint or Jersey barriers. So we tried to spend some time on on all of those things. I mostly ignored frankly, the off ramps on Route Two, which have some of the highest crash rates, but most of that's going to be Mast dot. So you think about roads in three categories. Limited access roads and their ramps is Mast dot and they don't even talk to you usually. Second category are state owned highways that are not limited access, where it's still Mast dot. But they're going to at least bring you into the conversation. Think about the work on Main Street by the school. And then local roads which are all you. And, you know, again, not spending time on things where Mast dot won't even talk to you, but on their right of way where they will talk to you. Mast dot has a a goal now of bike and pet access and every single road that they do full depth reconstruction on. So they are adding those things, again, useful to be at the table in the process. I don't know to what extent Lancaster is represented in the regional conversations, but we heard specific comments saying, oh, we should have this. And just important to make sure someone goes to the joint transportation committee and the Metropolitan Planning Organization being part of those conversations. And then, so this is just an example.
Hold on one second. Brian, don't we have someone going to those me, don't we have someone going to those meetings?
Well, sorry, I was distracted for one moment. Which meetings?
I get the emails from all of them, but. MRPC.
Oh, MRPC, yes. But the problem is with that Frank is we're both on the, well, it's the same night as the AHC meeting. Thursday, the first Thursday. And that's what makes it kind of hard to get to. But, uh, you know, maybe we can split our, um, you know, our our outfits here, or maybe, you know, I I can start going to them, uh, because, you know, Kate Hodges has said, by all means, go. Uh, I thought being, you know, staffing the AHC was going to be a a higher priority for me. Which probably is, but maybe I could, you know, maybe every other one or something. I don't know.
And with the trust, I I would probably pick your agendas. There are going to be certain ones where it's going to be really important to hear from you and others where it's not.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'll tell you what made me a convert in the two thousand and seven recession, when there was lots of stimulus money. Mast dot wanted to use the stimulus money in Western Mass to put a new coat coat of pavement on Mast Pike, which they were doing a pretty good job of anyway. And I showed up and we got ten million dollars for a bike path project because no one was just sort of advocating for it. And so that one day was, you know, I became a convert for life. As Frank said, most often those meetings are boring as all hell. And there's no reason to go, but it's worth following the agenda understanding. It's really once a year and usually three or four meetings, they're prioritizing how they spend the millions of dollars they have for projects for the next few years. And that's the meeting, those are the meetings that are really important.
Wayne, could you show up for me and get me ten million dollars?
Well, it doesn't happen.
It's just asking for a friend. Okay, okay.
Are you a road?
I I could be if I get ten million dollars. I'll be whatever you want for ten million dollars. I mean, seriously. But no, I mean, uh, so, I mean, I I think, yo, Frank, put this on your agenda for a takeaway. Even if we rotate between our members and Frank, George, give a thumb up, we could rotate who goes. But definitely have someone there. I mean, if that, if it's that kind of money out there that we.
Thank you very much for volunteering.
I I will. I'll volunteer. I'll volunteer George because he can't talk.
No, 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 no. Doesn't work that way. Just to be clear, the the Regional Planning Agency, MRPC, staffs them. But the decisions are made, it was called Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I don't know how it works in your area, but usually three or four towns elect a representative. And again, each each region's different, but those are the people you owe an influence. You know, if it's between Lancaster and Clinton, you know, how do you work together to make sure you're represented at the table in the process?
Let's talk about this as a takeaway.
Yeah, let's let's talk about this offline and figure out next steps.
I I agree, but it's worth looking into.
Yeah. So this next page, I just looked at low hanging fruit. I happen to use the Harvard Road Flyway, but just an example. You know, when I'm coming home, I love these shortcuts. You know, from Seven Bridges Road to Harvard Lot Road, it's really nice to take that shortcut. But those are the things that create crashes, right? You want those right angles where people have to slow down. So frankly, you should, you could, you should slow down the flyways. It may not be priority enough if you ever have crashes there. But the top one is just an example of a bad geometric design. And then the bottom two are just how communities with very inexpensive solutions solve that. You know, cans of paint, bollards. If your DPO hates bollards, they can be bollards that only go what you take down during the plowing season. If your DPO doesn't hate them, many towns plow snow right with them in place. But there's, there's ways to do inexpensive solutions and streets. Because generally, most crashes occur at intersections. And so it's nice to slow down the speed there. The roads themselves, you know, aren't so much the problem. It's the intersections where you crash. So we tried to identify some of those intersections.
So Wayne, I'm having a hard time. It are the intersections you showed, is that Lancaster?
The upper one is. So this upper one, do you see my cursor? This is going from Seven Bridges Road to Harvard Road. There's a shortcut through there. And, you know, imagine, so I'm sixty six, so my neck doesn't move the way it used to. If I'm going down this thing, I can't really see the left very well. If I'm driving a truck, I can't see the left. You know, a car coming here and turning right is a perfectly safe movement. A car going this way, less safe. The and these, the next two pictures are not Lancaster. There are solutions from other places to that.
Okay. So that intersection, and and not to beat a dead horse, but we, I I've not heard of a accident or anything at that intersection. Like forever.
So that's why I did two separate analysises, analysis, analysis. One was based on, one was based on crashes. And Regina, you're right. Usually we look at improvement needs based on crashes. So that's one thing that's important. But the second was just to look at bad geometry, because bad geometry is low volume, so often things don't happen. But it just, I've seen too often these things where nothing happens until there's a fatal collision. And then we all say, oh, my goodness, why did we miss that? So these are sort of accidents waiting to happen with so low volume that probably you won't see anything. But it could be really bad if you did see something. And the solutions are really cheap. I like things that are cheap solutions.
I agree, I agree. Yeah, I'm I'm just curious, like, I could pick more intersections to like go after than that one. I was just wondering why. I was just wondering why. And the other two, like, I could not relate to Lancaster.
Right, right. So I I don't know if you can see in your version here, but on this map, these red circles, those red circles are the places with intersections that are far from a right angle. So that alone, it are, these are basically the danger intersections ignoring the volume of traffic. And then, so this is the dangerous intersections based on crashes. Each dots a crash. Um, and these are dangerous intersections based on geometry. And this one right here, you know, just half a town hall is fairly high volume. And then I, I just wanted to show this to you because what Regina just said about not relating. So I, when I used to work in North Hampton, we commissioned a study saying, you know, we have urban areas, we have rural areas, we have suburban. There's different solutions for each spot. And so I just did this from that study that I commissioned on saying, different places in town need different solutions. And so it's a nice way to think, like, you know, this is a zoning solution. I I forgot if you have this already, but see how the sidewalk, if the sidewalk's concrete, it crosses the road, it's still a sidewalk? And the cars have to rise up to the sidewalk? That might be in your zone. I can't remember. But that kind of thing makes a huge difference. It sends a message to drivers, hey, this is a sidewalk to slow down, not a road to to speed up on. And again, you might have that. I can't remember, but.
No, we don't have any advice. No.
And then implication, I did the least because I basically want to flesh out this table after you say you're okay with the plan for going to the public forum and after the last public forum. So this is just a few things to show you. And that's the overview. So, you know, the the question for you all is, and obviously from whenever you read of the plan, not necessarily adopt the plan, obviously by long shot, but is the plan ready for prime time? Are we ready to to go before the public in a public forum? Maybe. Fair enough.
I I mean, I think we would probably, I I think the planning board members, I'm sure would like to dig into it a little bit. You know, now that you've walked us through the stuff that you think's important, we've got a good sense of your methodology. So, yes, but.
Fair enough.
Agree. Yes, but, I mean, I would like to take out, like, a few of your shots that the images that are not Lancaster, I would like to take those out. Because if it's not Lancaster, it's, it just forms confusion. Just like I had a question about the intersections. I mean, I'm like, where is that intersection? So, I don't know. Frank, George?
No, that makes sense. I I mean, I saw exactly what you meant about the intersection. And it's funny because as soon as Wayne said Harvard Road, I'm like, oh, yeah, and that is a weird intersection. It's less, Wayne, it's less weird than it used to be. Open with a granite horse trough in the middle of the traffic island. Because there's always been a horse trough there, and this is Lancaster. So we don't move our horse troughs. Uh, there isn't one there now, which makes me think that some truck came along and moved it inadvertently. But yeah, that intersection used to be just really strange.
I think I saw George with a thumbs up. I don't know if he can.
So George, even if you echo, come off mute. I would love to hear your input.
Okay. I think that a- as far as the the road construction is concerned, I think we can all see the the real strong benefits that have come from, uh, the reorganization of Route Seventy and and Main Street. Those things are are great. Some of the other intersections, particularly the on and off ramps to Route Two remain problematic. And, uh, even the traffic studies have indicated there's not a heck of a lot that could be done with those things. Although some modification might be possible. I think the the plan is super important. You know, we only got, what, two hundred and forty people to respond? Uh, and that's certainly better than we started out, but it's it's still a small percentage. And I I think I agree with Regina when she suggested that we should really highlight the the items about which people felt most strongly.
Thank you, George. I I know from being up at Nishoba with the kids, like, one of the questions was, and it, this is always stuck in my brain. Like, what if we had some kind of transportation, you know, to get to the rail station? And one student, he was funny. He was like, well, my mom will drive me. Why do I want a bus? You know, why do I want some way to go other than my mom? And that's awesome if you're going to live with your mom forever. But I I do like the idea, you know, if we think long term, is there, you know, what do we think long term for the town? Of some type of mass transit, some type of way to get up to the MBTA. Some type of way to develop that you can live in South Lancaster and get transit up to the T. And I think that is what I was thinking with this long term on on the plan. Now I'm echoing wicked bad.
I really like the idea. I mean, I took the train from Shirley for fifteen years, uh, going in and out of Boston. And I I think the idea of of some kind of a a shuttle would be super. But it goes back to one element that I think is a a critical infrastructure lack in town, and that's parking. So we're going to take a shuttle. Where do you park your car while you take the shuttle? So you want to go to the the walking area down near the railroad bridge. Where are you going to park your car? Suppose we had a coffee shop. Where would you park? Every everywhere you look, parking is a a critical infrastructure shortage. And I I think if we, if we fail to address that issue, you know, we're, we're further limiting opportunity.
And we have to be realistic about that because Cambridge and Somerville and Newton can address that issue much differently than we can. Just be, I mean, yes, we've become a suburban bedroom community, but we're still have large sections that are particularly rural, and it's just not possible to get around without an automobile. I mean, maybe if you're particularly good on a bike and you don't mind doing it in all kinds of weather. But for the vast majority of people in town, I believe that transportation is the automobile. And I, it also, as George points out, parking matters. And we don't have it. I mean, George and I have had repeated discussions about how nice it would be to have the Bolton Bean recreated in Lancaster, and the fact that there's no parking would prohibit it.
So I do have to say this. So I'm on High Street Extension. And I work from home all day long. I I probably see a dozen people on either scooters or, what's the stupid thing you stand on and? No, it's not Segway. It's the scooter boards, the, it looks like a skateboard with, thank you, the electric scooters all day long. And they go up and down High Street Extension. So I do think there's a need. I, and you're right, you know, it could be a parking. So, you know, Lomester has parking lots. You know, I I call her Scooter Girl. She comes back and forth all day long, going to work, even in the winter. There is need. I I just think, you know. we, we have to think bigger to get Lancaster to survive outside of people over our age.
Yep. All right. I can definitely add that in the context of sort of either major destinations. Like, if you ever were gonna get a walkable village on Main Street, yes, would probably need some sort of clear, you know, shared parking area. And then also as a potential, if there ever was some sort of transit service that came into town. I mean, not just the one along Route 10, but when they came elsewhere, you'd have to have some sort of central. I saw that as a theme.
Well, I mean, it's, it was very popular to support local businesses. But local businesses aren't gonna survive if customers can't get to them. And that means driving and parking. And also, that's how, for instance, Mike's Diner could be successful because they've got a big parking area. I mean, I noticed the comparison. You know, there's another diner down there, Sandy's, with a smaller parking area. And it's always totally slammed and they're trying to park, you know, elsewhere around, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, we don't have any public park in town. There, there is none. There's, and the thing is, is that the main streets are state routes. So we have questions about, you know, how much can you park in a state route?
So Frank, we're talking about the master plan.
The only parking.
So Frank, I, I don't think we're looking to solve this, but bring it to the master plan, that this is something we want long term.
Oh, absolutely. We're not gonna solve it today, but just to point out that that's a significant constraint that must be addressed to achieve some of the residents' priorities.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that probably both at the economic development and the mobility section, mobility and circulation sections.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, just Lancaster is just too big to be walkable.
Agreed.
And the walkability also assumes sidewalks, which are not as widely available in town.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I talk about Lancaster Center and that South Main Street Village is now a strip is that's the area which someday could be walkable. I think the rest of town never will be. I agree.
And there are sidewalks there. They may not be in the best shape, but there are sidewalks.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Other comments?
Going back to the decom. So in the presentation, the decom, again, we need to bring in sidewalks that link the decom to the center of town. High Street Extension. I mean, it, otherwise we're making it an area that is not accessible.
But Regina, I'm gonna give you a little pushback on that because let's assume that you are sidewalks going all the way down Old Common to Route 110. Now, first, first off, those things are gonna be pretty steep. But I mean, the issue that I have is that the decam site is not within walking distance of anything, even if there were sidewalks.
Okay, so disagree because I watch the walkers all day long. I just myself walked from the center of town back to my house. It's a, a nice stroll. It's a nice walk. I mean, there's walkers all day long who like to walk down. The only reason they walk Main Street is that's our only sidewalks. Unless you go to and then you have sidewalks again.
Yep, now there's a certain issue. There absolutely is an issue with lack of sidewalks. I was trying to parse the difference as well between people who are walking because they want to go for a walk and want to get exercise versus somebody wanting to walk to the store.
True. Agreed, but disagree. I think if there's sidewalks, people enjoy the walk.
I, I know. Let's not forget about bike lanes within the.
I've seen a couple of, a couple of smallish towns. Some small towns that use virtually continual shuttle buses. It goes from this part to that part to another part. And, you know, whether it's early in the morning and it's carrying commuters to the MBTA or whether it's during the day and we're going from decam to the post office or whatever. But I, I know it sounds wacky, but I, I think it's, you know, bear in mind that there's so little parking, it might be an opportunity for mobility around town for a fairly modest cost.
Well, and, and part of the context for that might be, you know, a fixed route bus is gonna be really expensive with that private ridership. There has been some exploration recently about micro-mobility, stuff that used to only be for seniors and those with disabilities to sort of think about dial-a-ride. There's been some interest in your region in particular and some other regions about dial-a-ride also being for other populations. And that might be the way you prove yourself. You know, you have one van with one driver and you see, you know, how successful is it? You know, the problem frankly is when they do those, those rides end up costing them $10 a ride, literally. And that's hard to support. So I mean, it's gonna be a little bit everything. I mean, you know, I think doing a shuttle that goes from, I'm making this up, but from the center to the train station in morning, afternoon, rush hour, if there was a parking ride lot there, that might be viable. Sidewalks are the least expensive way to move people if there's people to move. So, you know, sort of explore all those things.
Okay. Other comments?
Well, I was, I was saying earlier, you know, especially at the decam and if anything ever happens to AUC, of course, but in between the center of town, without thinking, you know, trying to connect North Lancaster to South Lancaster, that's one thing. But, you know, I could definitely see bike lanes on Center Bridge Road or, and on lots of, I don't know about South Main Street, but connecting those two areas through complete streets programs, which we are a member of, and shared streets, which are, you know, easily accessible. We could be taking advantage of those programs when it's appropriate. Right now, we don't have, we have to get the connecting points, right? But within South Lancaster, I agree with you, Frank, that we have to have the the parking, you know, so whether it's some type of central public parking that then needs sidewalks to connect the businesses and to recreation destinations and other types of destinations, that's what we will need to work on. The other point is the MRPC, the regional transportation agencies are always looking for some type of, you know, services that they can provide to their communities. And of course, I know the transportation director over at MRPC, it may be just a question of popping in on some of their MPO meetings to find out what's possible there, to George's point and Regina's point.
And certainly depending what happens at AUC, you know, if you had a master developer who is coming in to plan the whole campus, you know, it wouldn't be, it just, it doesn't always have to be the town who's responsible. You can imagine a master developer as part of permitting, opening up a shared parking lot that would serve their project and the rest.
And I'm saying, you know, in AUC, not AUC, but the decam, there's gonna be larger developers there as well. Maybe not providing parking for downtown, but sidewalk, some sidewalk infrastructure from there to downtown.
Yep. And, and one way I've often worked to leverage developers' money is the hardest thing for, to get mass stop money is to have the design completed on a shelf. So sometimes I might get a developer to pay for the design and then you can shop it around for state money, which is the bigger cost, but, you know.
Right, but it's, it's, it's good to have that timely submission when the grants come up to have that design ready to go.
Exactly.
Okay, so we've got some suggestions here. What are next steps? Are we gonna see, when are we next gonna see a revised version? We're meeting next on June 10th. Wayne, are you gonna be able to come to that? Are you around?
Um, hold on a second. So no, I'm actually leaving on June 10th for three, or June 8th for a three-week trip.
So Frank, when is our next meeting?
June 10th.
June 10th is the public, but is the planning board meeting, but June 4th and 5th is a rain day will be the third community forum for the master plan at the church.
Okay, so Wayne, you think, when do you think we can get updates so at least, you know, we can get comments back to Brian and him to you as needed?
Um, so I'm about to leave tomorrow on a trip and I'm back on Monday. I can certainly do it by the end of next week, like by May 1st. Actually, we have a due revised plan to you, but, but more time if you want to send comments. So, you know, you can't, you can't deliberate outside of public meeting, but you can all individually send comments to Brian who can send them to me.
So at a certain point, I'm, I'm not 100% clear how much giving you feedback on a master plan is actually deliberation. But, you know, better safe than sorry as far as that goes.
Right. So Frank, I'm gonna throw it out here. Outside of the comments we, and, you know, feedback we gave Wayne tonight. If he updates the plan, do we really need to do it again? Or?
What again? Another forum?
Right, another forum. Like, if, if he takes all the feedback that George, you and I gave him tonight, because we have a forum, and says, here's the version we're gonna put to the public. Can we read through it and be good? Or do we have to do this again?
Well, I, I think the thought was that it wouldn't be available prior to that final forum as the sort of almost absolutely locked down draft so that people could then comment, we could get final comments. You know, and then finish final revisions if done. You're gonna have to excuse.
I'm good, I'm good going to that. I don't have to go outside.
Yeah, well.
George. So, George, yeah.
Like I said, just say, I think, you know, the idea is not to get, tend to get feedback, but just to do that to the public. And, you know, getting some feedback. At this point, we want to have, you know, all of Wayne's analysis. And in the sense, this is something of the permits that he's received. The permits that he's received, waiting for my feedback to complete. You know, so I don't know, I don't think we're open up entirely to discussion of the. I don't know. But it's, it's just a question of. Here it is. You know, tell us, here it is. Okay, thank you. And I think George, to your point too.
George, can we try muting and let's see if we can flush this out, the feedback.
Are you muted, George? There you go. So, I mean, yeah, so I think, and I'm, I don't know why I'm drawing a blank on the name, but the George's friend at the church who's more or less the.
Wayne Clark.
Wayne, Wayne Clark, yeah, that's it. Thank you, Frank. So, you know, he's suggesting all the things that were suggested before, you know, the bonfire, the community gathering, the, the, the whatever, you know, potluck or whatever, you know, there's a few, I, I was gonna forward to the email. But I think a lot of the things we were talking about before, to make this more of a community, as opposed to a community discussion, you know, be a discussion, of course, but also be a community celebration for the master plan. You know, based on our 298 responses on the survey, it's something to celebrate.
No, and, and I'm not downsizing that. What my question is, and maybe I phrased it wrong, is I thought we were looking to put something to that group to the next level. And if, and I guess my question is, from what we talked about tonight, if Wayne could take the document, put it to that next level, can we, like, move forward? Because I just keep thinking, we're, we're talking about a great document and we keep red penning the same document. And I don't feel like we're moving forward.
Well, okay, George, I think what we mentioned is.
And Wayne's doing a ton of work, but we're not moving forward.
Right, but then, but then after the, after the master plan is, you know, you know, produced and accepted by the town, then that's when the work starts. Then you've got the implementation phase. Okay, now, in, in towns have been doing exactly that. Like, for instance, they do a master plan implementation committee, you know, where people are, I mean, you have to hold the different tasks, you know, people, staffs, board groups, whoever accountable for implementing the, you know, so at the end of the master plan, there's going to be a list of goals and objectives. Okay, and these are gonna be actionable. Now it's just gonna be a question of holding boards and committees and people accountable for making sure these are being implemented and not letting it sit on the shelf. So I think that's a whole other discussion. That's, that's, you know, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne. That's going to be, you know, a major part of this plan is the implementation.
So let me repeat what I think I'm hearing from Brian, Regina, but Frank and George have to weigh in. This may not work for you, which is, I will take your comment tonight. By May 6th, which is a Monday, I'll give you a revised version that addresses all your comments and flushes out the implementation section more. Then that's almost a month to either June 4th or June 5th for a public forum, the final public forum. So that, that means you have to be comfortable. The plan is good enough for prime time for people to see, but you're not committed. You reserve the right to make any revisions you want. We have that meeting June 4th and June, or June 5th. Planning board, that's also, the plan will look elegant enough that you can report it to your state funder, because that's the June 30th deadline. But that's not a plan you're adopting yet. And then after the June 4th meeting, the planning board meets June 10th without me, or I may be able to call in for my trip. And then I revise it again, you know, as many times you need to you're comfortable with it, and then you adopt it finally. But I want to, but only if that works for you all.
Right, but what, and then once we own the master plan, after, you know, we give Wayne a bottle of champagne and a, and a trip to wherever, you know, you know, but then that, that's when, you know, that's when the work starts, you know, and we're gonna need the planning board or, you know, we're gonna have to decide, okay, how are we gonna implement this, you know? Who's gonna be, you know, do we have a subcommittee? Is it gonna be the planning board? Is it gonna be a representative from different boards or it's gonna be a whole new task force? But, you know, we have to have an implementation plan. You know, usually what are the short-term goals identified? What are the midterm goals identified and the long-term goals identified? And usually there's some type of, um, you, 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 you know, every, every quarter, once a quarter, boards, whoever is identified as the owner of a certain goal and objective, they have to report back, what have you done? What progress are you making towards, towards these, these actionable goals? These deliverables, if you will. And that's, and that's an ongoing process until it's either completed or to the next, to the next master plan. And I think, you know, and I like the idea that, you know, all policy, and I know we don't have this in Massachusetts, but, you know, what are you proposing? Is it in the master plan? It must be in the master plan unless it's. what are you proposing? Is it in the master plan? It must be in the master plan unless it's some type of an emergency, you know? Um, and and that's what this should be the main principal policy.
I have a a question for Wayne that that I had previously raised tonight. I wonder if you were ever were able to to what extent the previous master plan had been implemented in town?
So I could partially answer that. So we did a list in here, the camera that is, I think we did a list in here of all the major recommendations from the past plan. I don't know enough about what you've done to be able to say which of those things you did and didn't do. But at least as a list, and maybe one of you can opine on that piece.
I remember, you know, I I I read the master plan before I came on here while I was interviewing. And um it seems to me a lot of the uh you know, I I mean, there were a lot of things related to the AUC at the time, and of course, that couldn't happen, but um yeah, I should go back now that I know a lot more about the town and what's happened, I should go back and revisit that two thousand seven master plan myself and see what we've um, you know, but I know in Methuen, a lot of people, well, you know, we didn't do anything last, I look back, I look, there was a lot of things that were accomplished. Um, but, you know, here, I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at it myself and have a better, I have a better idea now of what we've done, what we haven't done. So I could work on that, George, too.
That would be great.
In addition, what Wayne has has in his list.
Okay, so are we gonna wait then for a May 6th update and take it from there?
But I I guess the question is, Frank, are you ready for us to schedule that public forum on either June 4th or June 5th hanging meeting? Or do you want to wait till the planning board digest that plan?
Well, I just heard Frank asking about May 6th update. So what is that?
So May 6th is when I'll send you the revised plan based on tonight's comments. The problem is you won't be meeting until June 10th. So you wouldn't have a chance to review it. I mean, individually, you might. So the question is, do you want us to go ahead and schedule that June 4th or 5th public forum? Or do you want to wait till your June 10th meeting when you get a chance to go through it?
That's a very good thing, right?
And and just to just clear, I'm not in a hurry. I'm it's strictly you asked me to do this by June 30th because of the grant that you have. If the grant's not a problem, then take all the time you want. I'm not pushing it all. If the grant's the problem, that's why I was trying to think, can I give you a clean enough version you can report to your grant funder, even though it hasn't been adopted yet by you all?
That would certainly argue for having another public forum. I mean, my my thought on that would be, we have it scheduled. We could always cancel it, but it'll be difficult to schedule at the last minute. And I do think it's helpful to have a public forum that says, hey, we actually did stuff. Here's what we did. Here's what it's starting to look like. Um, I I think something like that, you know, could be helpful. Um, and I I would say that our big concern is just simply timing, that we need to have something that is that meets the requirements of the grant by in hand by June 30th.
Okay, all right. So I think then the time schedule is May 6th, I'll give you a revised plan based on tonight's comments. Brian will go ahead and figure out if it's June 4th or June 5th, and we'll hold that final public forum. June 10th, then you guys will come back and reflect on what you heard. Um, I'm in the UK, but assuming I can have connections, I'll call in on that meeting. Um, and uh then go from there. At that point, you have something clean enough to give to the state, and then you figure out how quickly or not quickly, you know. If you, if the plan's done, that's great. If you need lots of changes, that's fine too.
Well, so here's what I see as the checks. So you're gonna show, you're gonna give us a plan on May 6th. If we all don't start screaming that this is utterly horrible, and how could we even consider having another public forum? Um, then we're gonna have to reconsider the public forum. Assuming that's not the case, and you know, it continues roughly as it did tonight, where you'll make some re some revisions, and we'll be able to look at it and say, okay, you know, this is this is pretty much good enough for prime time, then to be able to have it out there, at at least in my mind, and have people who care be able to talk about it. And, you know, that's gonna be the time to get to listen very carefully for the I don't understand comments. You know, what did he mean by this? It's like Regina flagging the the intersections that weren't in Lancaster. That didn't make sense to me. You know, to try to be able to get those so that when people are working on this, which which excludes any one of us, that it's gonna be pretty clear in terms of what the plan said and what was expected. That there there weren't areas that people looked and go, well, those are interesting sounding words, but I have no idea what they mean.
That's fair.
Um, and and then I then I think at that point, you know, we're in a position on, you you at that point are in a position to make any final tweaks if, you know, if something comes up, if necessary. Um, you know, and then we've got a meeting which I would assume we would take the final vote would be June 24th. Which would be our final meeting in June, and that would allow, you know, all the time possible. Um, certainly, we should spend some time on it on the 10th. So it seemed to me that that would give a couple of of iterative rounds that we could use to to polish it and uh, you know, and address these things and get it into better shape. So, and then, you know, if we need to keep talking to you over the summer or whatever, great, we've got the plan, but we have a plan that satisfies the grant that Kate can point to the state and go, you gave us the money, here's the plan. Um, because I think we're still allowed to to tweak it. And Brian, does the town have to accept this plan or just us?
No, just the planning board.
Okay.
Many, just to clear, legally, it's only the planning board, you can do nothing else. Many towns ask the select board to just because frankly, it makes a more powerful document, particularly for applying for grants, but not required, and not every town does that anyway.
Well, we'll suss out what the new select board thinks about it and take it from there. So, okay. George, Regina, Brian, do you guys have any other comments, or do we have a way forward?
I think we're moving forward.
Yep.
I'm I'm good with it at this point. Uh, I I think we've we've asked some questions and added some ideas, um, and the next step sound appropriate to me. Yeah, let's move to there.
Great. Okay, well, Wayne, thank you very much. You've got your marching orders.
That sounds great. Thank you so much for your help. All your comments were very helpful.
Wonderful. Thanks for coming. Safe travels.
Thanks. Take care. Bye.
Bye.
Are we meeting Wednesday, Wayne, or no?
Um, hold on a second. Uh, if it's useful, yeah, I'm up in a hotel, but you don't care. I can call from anywhere. So, yeah.
Okay, all right, sure. Look at you Wednesday morning.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks. Bye.
Wonderful. Okay, um Hawthorne Lane. So we're 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 now getting updates from you, Brian. So what do you have to tell us about Hawthorne Lane?
I have anything about Hawthorne Lane. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to make any connections to, uh, so what I can tell the board about Hawthorne Lane is what's going on is, um, I don't know if I told this the last time, but uh, you you know, we did get ahold of the developer, the developer's at the table, sort of kind of. Um, and he, uh, there are emails going back between um Kate and and the developer about um getting that road in shape. The Conservation Commission has has uh voted to accept the the open space as a with a conservation restriction. So uh, that that's that's moving forward. Of course, now how that's structured is the uh, the the open space minus the carve out of the water pumping station in the easement to, I think I well hit, I believe, which will be maintained by the Lancaster Water Department. Okay, the the balance of that is going to be in concert in a restriction held by the Conservation Committee. Uh, Commission. Uh, then the next step is going to be um whether the town wants to accept the road. Uh, so now I, you know, we are still the only thing I I um, I don't believe Kate has heard anything back from from the developer. I've been asking Kate, I haven't gotten any updates, so I'm assuming that's the case. So we're just moving now between us and Tom Castle and Kate and the developer, and hopefully we're gonna get this resolution. Um, yes, there were some important questions that uh Frank in particular has posed. What happens when this subdivision expires, which it will, uh, before we meet again? I extended uh and, you know, with the uh other people, pertinent people on the email to the developer, inviting him uh to come to this meeting to request an extension. Um, but I did not get a response.
So Brian, is putting Hawthorne Lane on the town warrant is bad via? I haven't seen it.
I I know the select board has, um I I I don't wanna say, but I I just don't know, Regina, what the, because I know that there's a delicate conversations there. Um, and I think in a perfect world, I think there are some people in town who would like to see the road adopted by town meeting, but that's up to town meeting. That's up to the voters.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is it on the warrant? Because isn't the warrant for town meeting?
The warrant, the warrant is out. Uh, I'm looking at it at the moment. My understanding is it is on there as a citizen's petition.
Right, that's it. Yes, a citizen's petition, which doesn't, which a citizen's petition is not a legal way to accept the road. But it is an impetus for the town to um you you know, to do it in the legal way. So they can't, the citizen's petition by itself is is weightless.
Right, no, totally understand. I mean, they have to.
Yes, but I but I but that is, I think that is the, I recommendation is going to be from the from the select board.
I'm very curious, Brian and and Frank, um, about the legal ramifications if the subdivision expires prior to our next meeting, and and you have been um the developer hasn't responded back to you. So what happens if the thing expires? Where are we then?
Well, I I've been researching this, and I, there's nothing in our subdivision rules and regulations, uh, you know, that that has a procedure of what a developer needs to do if his subdivision expires. Uh, and that's why, and I've had, um, you know, my list of questions to town council, ask those questions specifically. And I just haven't been able to relate that connection before tonight's meeting, but I'm not giving up. Um, I I want to get those questions. Do we do the subdivision rules and regulations? I even looked through state zoning. You know, and there doesn't seem to be a procedure uh, an outline of what happens if a subdivision approval expires. Frank's question is, does he need to start over? I just, I don't, you know, I just don't have an answer yet.
Now, and Brian, Brian, I I feel for you because I don't think we've ever been in this situation where it's a I hate to say it, a gentleman's handshake that the gentleman didn't hold up.
Right.
Well, just we may be entering new ground legally in terms of what are the state requirements here? I would assume that it's pretty rare that a subdivision expires. But the plain reading of the word expire means you go back to what it was before it was subdivided.
Right.
So I I don't know the implications. I don't know how. I would certainly like to hear from council, and I'm pretty sure most of the homeowners would too.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, from from what I'm looking at is that you have insurance and mortgages. And all those are predicated on separate lots and separate properties. So I've got no idea, and I don't know what the planning board's role is either. I mean, in terms of a normal subdivision, you know, let's take oh, I don't know, let's let's look at 2038 Lunenburg. Do they have to come back to us for a sign off when they're all done? Saying, do they get a sign off from us saying you met your order of conditions? What's the process?
Is there a certificate of completion? Well, I mean, it does need to be signed off by, you know, Public Works, is the is the road? Well, I I think, I think what the uh you know, in an indirect way, the certificate of completion is the road accepted. Now, this is a little difference because the road as approved, the the subdivision as approved was meant to be a private road, and it was an HOA in the end. So, I mean, that's that's the question we were talking about, Frank. Is is this, is this the subdivision even? The subdivision is not as approved to begin with, you know? It was supposed to be a private road and an HOA. So what, you know, uh, he's asking for an extension to do what? To create the HOA and and maintain as a private road? It seems to have moved on into another realm. Okay? You know, what is? And again, I I don't wanna, not, I I I don't know what the the answer is, but I think it's it's now, it's just a question of what is the best way out of this situation? And is it to um I I don't know. I mean, I I don't wanna say. I think in an ideal world, some people would wanna see this road accepted, you know? But others may not want it, because that's not the way it works. Things could work.
So Frank, this is Regina.
Yep.
This is, this is how I see it. That subdivision was built as a private road, okay? Number one. Number two, yes, they're taxpayers. So they would like to have the same benefits as every taxpayer to have their road plowed, okay? Totally get that. When we look at the town's interest, we're just saying, should the town plow that if the road does not meet the standard? Or the town is taking on a road that does not meet 2024 standards? So we wanna make sure the town is covered. We will make sure the taxpayers get what they get. And to make everyone happy, this is not gonna be an easy venture. Plus, you wanna make sure that the easements, so if the town takes the road, everyone understand there is easement that goes into their property. Are are all the people on that Hawthorne Lane ready to accept that as well? So I I think there's a lot of discussion. I think legal needs to be involved, as well as the DPW um, needs to be involved. And now we have the new superintendent, his involvement, his input, as long as well as their board on whether Hawthorne Lane meets the compliance. So that's just my two cents.
No, that's that's exactly right, Regina. And just to your point, yes, they they, no, they are involved now. And my best understanding is that the road is close to being in an in an acceptable, in an in acceptable state. Um, there is a punch rest. Uh, and this is what we're waiting to hear back from the developer on. He has told us he's, this is gonna happen now. This is, he's given us the schedule of when things are gonna happen. A a few things I can think of, there was um uh, you know, the fire hydrants needed to be raised, some curb reveals needed to be changed. I I can't think of the all the list, but they were very doable things. So it it wouldn't certainly not be, it's not by any means outside the realm of possibility that this road can be accepted. The water department are are there, they're, they've pretty much said this is, yeah, this is very doable. This is in a situation, this is in a state where this could be accepted. Whether it's accepted or not, that remains to be seen, but it it is close to to be a road that could be accepted.
My understanding is there's there's two separate issues. I mean, the first is does the road meet DPW specs? And and I think does the road meet DPW specs? And, and I think that it will. I mean, it's the same situation. You go back to Eagle Ridge, which those were GPW spec roads, but the order of conditions said that they should stay private. And that was what was agreed. And the people from Eagle Ridge came into town meeting and said, well, we were never told they're staying private and we pay taxes too, so you should take them public. Um, and this is the, the same issue that this road was never meant to be a public road and was never meant to be conveyed, not because of how it was built, but because of how it was owned. Um, and the developer, I think, has left the town with not a whole lot of flexibility in this matter.
Agreed.
All right, you know, this is, this is, I kind of go back to Roy Rezak at the last meeting where he's talking about the high school, where he basically said, this is an awful situation. And here are the other three options and they're all worse. And, uh, you know, I, I think that that's kind of where we are. I don't think we're necessarily going to see a happy solution from that, but ideally it'll get locked down somehow. So is there anything else we need to do about Hawthorne Lane at this point?
I'm just, um, you know, again, Frank, I'm just every day I'm trying to continue up, follow up and get all the information I can from, for you guys and to keep you informed as I, as I go along.
Also just keep us posted. That's all you can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
All right.
Okay, so let's move on to what advice we are supposed to be giving the ZBA on 13 Neck Road. Uh, I want to again remind members of the public who are here, the planning board's role is simply to the extent the ZBA asks us for our opinion to give it. We've got no official role. We have no vote. So there seems to be some confusion about that. So I try to bring it up at every meeting.
Right. Okay. Right. So it says, and again, as I explained to Frank earlier, um, you know, just, just kind of imagine that the planning board in state statute were the ones who were to accept, um, y- y- you know, uh, or to, to, to vote up or down a, a 40B. Um, you know, we would be looking for, uh, input, even though that there, there's no vote from ZBA on dimension, on dimensional, uh, requirements from the conservation on, you know, WPA or Water, uh, Wetlands Protection Act, uh, measures. Uh, so this is, you know, uh, instead of just letting the ZBA on its own, uh, we just want to, we just want to inform them or give them comments in terms of almost like a peer review. This is what we would like to see. Uh, so, um, from the, the, from the last ZBA meeting of, um, uh, the March ZBA meeting, after the traffic and parking, um, presentation, there are, and I, I I hope I forwarded to all of you the comments. Uh, so now they're on the third peer review and Vanasse's and Vanasse, our, the peer review, um, the peer reviewer for the traffic and parking, um, has mostly agreed that all, um, uh, comments were resolved. Uh, the question, you know, the, I just again, how, highlight some of the logic questions there was the, um, uh, the, the, the applicant did come back with, um, wider, I mean, I'm sorry, angled parking in one way. I think they're coming, your traffic would come in from neck road and enter and exit on Center Bridge Road. They, so with the angle parking, they lost three or four parking spaces, but they're still pretty much well above an average, what, what the, uh, development of that type would, would, um, um, generally have. But, but you know, that's, it's not two cars per, per unit. And that's tight, but, uh, it's still a question of, uh, maneuverability. Um, the, uh, and of course, another question's outstanding is, um, snow storage. It just doesn't, you know, that, that's going to be a challenge for, for the, for the, um, for, for the developer. Uh, they came back with, uh, uh, improved sight lines, um, and signage on, on the, uh, neck road. Because again, this is one of Wayne's, uh, not 90 degree intersections that which are inherently dangerous, right? Uh, so, uh, and this is where the, um, Chief Moody weighed in as well with comments that they need, so the, um, the developer has, uh, provided his revised site plans with some improvements in those areas. The, I did forward the lighting plan to, did I forward the lighting plan to you guys?
Hey, Brian, it's Regina. So just question, going back to, and, and I think this is what this was about, the roadway. Um, I think it was the option of the four-way stop.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm pretty sure that was accepted.
The four-way stop was accepted by who?
Well, the, uh, oh, no, I'm sorry. Not the four-way. I'm talking about Oh, no, go, go ahead again. I'm, I'm like, I was thinking of something.
No, so.
I mean, that would have to be accepted by the, by the, please the problem.
Okay. And, and, and I wasn't sure if that's what you were referencing about acceptance. So like, that was, was the four-way stop accepted or it's still just like something being tossed around?
Uh, that's No, can, can I get back to you with that, Regina? I don't want to do it. Well, I, I will definitely, I have that.
No, thank you.
Being at home tonight and not having my files next to me and not having the 13 neck road with me. Um, I will definitely get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, I have a question, um, from the discussion about this, this project on, at the last meeting. And I, I recall that uh, there was a discussion that there was a stormwater collection that would discharge to the river. So my first question is, is that, is there provision for, for the stormwater collection being treated? Um, for oils and, and other vehicular fluids before that goes into the, the national?
Uh, well, yes, it isn't really, okay, so the, the, the porous cement, while not, maybe not as as efficient as, uh, so you know, that is a, that is filters out and it will translate, I, I don't have the, I can't remember numbers. Uh, you know, it's like a 70 or 75% um, infiltration type of thing. Okay. So by the time it gets, it, it's, it's pretty good. Uh, porous cement is, is, you know, a, a pretty good infiltrator, um, system. The problem that it's going on is it's not the o- oils and the toxins that are being transported through the porous cement. It's the fact that the, the, um, drain system is first draining into a catch basin. Okay. Now, catch basins are designed to take, um, flow off of streets that are then picking up, you know, the oils and the other, uh, pollutants. And, but it, it gets deposited into a four-foot pit, a sump as they call it. Okay. And that collects the sediment. Now that's only as good as often as they come by and pick up clean out the sediment. But what's, as this, if this is draining in from the site, what's, you know, it's, it's much better. Okay. So it's, it's the, the storm flow is flowing into the pit and the sedimentation is being agitated. And it's, and that is at risk of entering into the storm, into the drainage, the, the pipe that's headed to the, to the, um, outflow to the river. The obvious, um, solution would be don't, don't route this into the, into the catch basin, do it to a drain manhole. A drain manhole do not collect stormwater from the street. It's, so it stays clean to the point, now I did go out with Scott McDonald last week or the week before, uh, and he showed me the route, you know, to the river. It goes around the corner and then it just outfalls on this little type of rip rap and it trickles over ground. You know, in, in the wooded area behind Main Street. Okay. Uh, so, eh, you know, what it's picking up along the way there on this wooded section into the, into the, um, in, into the river, you know, maybe not the ideal, but it's not, it's not collecting any more um, oils or other, unless there's people go out there and dump illegally. But, so I think that's the, what we will be pressing, um, through the cons, through the Conservation Commission is to somehow reroute this, not through that catch basin, but through a drain manhole. Um, it may be a little bit more costly for the developer and of course they're draining the, you know, maybe they were thinking they were going to, you know, any engineer why are you draining into a, a catch basin? You shouldn't be doing that, you know? Uh, it was caught and so I, I might, my sense is that they'll probably somehow route it into either a new drain, new drain manhole and not to the catch basin.
So Brian, I love the fact that you went out with Scott McDonald. Um, does he feel in Scott's knowledge that it can be rerouted? The stormwater can be rerouted? Thank you. That's, that's all I wanted to hear is the yes. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, it's just again, when people, when people, you know, this is a pretty small development. And when, um, you know, and as everyone knows, if you're trying to include affordable, uh, uh, provide affordable housing, uh, y- y- your, your pro forma doesn't, doesn't, doesn't balance out, you know, unless you, I don't want to say cut corners, but you have to find savings somewhere in your pro forma and your, in your development balance sheet. Uh, and was this one? I don't know. Was it just an engineering oversight? Maybe. We don't know. You know, but there, it's just, it was caught and now with, you, you know, asking politely, asking the developer to, can you please reroute this, or, um, do something different with this, with this, um, um, surface runoff from the site?
And, and honestly, having Scott McDonald involved, I, I feel very confident. So thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. I've been, I've been working very closely with Scott since he, uh, became the, um, new supervisor.
Good deal. They now have a lighting plan.
Yes.
Has that gone through peer review yet?
No, I'm waiting to hear back from this. I was hoping to have it by today, but no, I haven't got that back from the site, uh, review yet.
Okay. Cause I mean, I think we should certainly look at it after peer review.
Right, yeah. I know, lighting plans are kind of tricky to look at. But I think if the plan that I sent you, what it's showing is, y- y- you know, you have the lumens and the, and the light on the side, on the wall mouse that they have. And then those circles that you see on the plan, you, if you follow them, they're just, um, what they call foot candles. So the amount of illumination decreases as it gets further out into the parking lot.
Yep. So, okay, good. And is, are those all posted in the ZBA site?
Yes, I am trying, everything I'm getting from, from the developer should be up there. I'm
Okay, great.
I'm not missing anything, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because you have no reason really to post them on the planning board site, but I'm glad they're all going up in the ZBA site.
Get it to the planning board members, but no, uh, we're trying to point everyone interested in this project to the, um, 13 neck road, um, link on the ZBA site.
Okay, perfect. That sounds great. Okay, is there anything else for us on that? I think, uh, stormwater and lighting was kind of it.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll keep you posted as we move on.
Okay. Uh, so why don't you give us a, a quick staff report? Um, what's the latest on Fish and Games A and R?
Sure, yes. So, uh, what's going on there? Um, that plan, they are, so that's on 339 Seven Bridge Road, right? I'm getting my bridge roads mixed up. 330, 339 Seven Bridge Road. So, okay, yeah. So, uh, what's going on there is that now I, I spoke to, um, the you know, person at the fishing game. Oh, no, she's actually at the engine, but she's been working with the fishing game. Generally what happens, this is an area, this is a 33, 35 acre site that does not have frontage. But it will abut to not having it, we don't have the A and R plan yet, but this is the summary of the, of the proposed, the project that will be proposed. Uh, it will abut to, um, property that fishing game already owns. The intent um, with, again, without having the application is probably to protect an endangered species. This is what they're in the business of doing. So they have an opportunity, they see there's some type of endangered species here. Uh, and that they want, there's an opportunity to acquire this land and to connect it to land that they already own that has frontage. Um, and that, that's their objective. So I will find out more about what's that protected species and once we get the application, but there, that, I'm, I'm expecting that within a couple, within, within a week or two at the most.
So we'll, we'll see that on June 10th. We'll also see Kalen's latest A and R effort also on the 10th.
Yes, yes.
I know, he's getting behind. We could have two more by then.
Right, right. Well, there, actually there is another one. Oh, no, not another, um, I was going to put it in new business. Uh, while we go on with, with this, I just have another, uh, Friday and, uh, another.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll do that under new business. Let's stick to the agenda. Okay, so if that's fish and wildlife, um, you spoke to Frank McPartland. Do we have any specific updates on 201 Hilltop? And how are they doing with their existing order of conditions?
Yeah. Okay, so I, uh, so what they're hoping to do there is again, it's, it's a hope. Um, the, what they're looking for is efficiencies on, on their end. So they are holding off their, they would like the, the plan, this is their ask. They are hoping that the, the planning board will consider allowing them. They, they, their plan is to rent heavy equipment to perform the orders of conditions from, from the Conservation Commission, which is mainly a, a, a tree planting plan. Okay, to replace the trees that were, um, you know, illegally taken up. This heavy equipment is, needs to remove the tree stumps from, from the, from that mitigation site. What they are hoping is that they have to, while they have this heavy equipment on site, is that they can then turn around and just start doing some site work for their proposed, um, you know, horse, horse arena, what of the, the project, what they're doing there. That's what, that's what they're hoping. They just want to say, you know, will we be able to, of course, as they're doing their, they're, they're removing the stumps and they're, then, you know, then they have to do the tree planting, so they will not have had uh, the opportunity to do all the tree planting and then go back to the, uh, Conservation Commission to get their certificate of compliance. You know, but now that the equipment is on site and they start doing some grading and site work um, on, on the other, on the part outside of the conservation, I don't know, jurisdictionary.
So this order of conditions came into what was put into place by the Concomwind. Was that 21 or 22? Because they came, they came to us in either late 22 or at some point in 23, because they've been under a stop work. And I recall being at a meeting telling them that anytime you want to take the stumps out of there, just come to us and we'll give you permission to take the stumps out.
Yeah.
But, um, if that thing was first given a couple of years ago and they've been able to remove the stumps at any time over the past few years, why did they not comply?
I, I don't, I don't have the answer for that, Frank. I would, uh,
That would certainly be an answer that I, I would like to hear from them.
Yes, yeah.
You know, fair, fairly explicitly, because we're being asked to potentially change our procedures in their best interest. But they have been, um, rather reluctant to comply with the various orders previously issued.
Okay. So I mean, again, that, their application is going to be before this board on the 10th.
Well, we'll, we'll look at it all then.
Yep, yeah. Mm-hmm. Now, did I already forward all their application materials to you or do I need to get that? Okay, so I, I'll have that to you guys, you know? Okay, so I I'll have that to you guys, you know. I'll do it this week, so plenty of time to look at it.
Okay.
Brian, it's sort of.
Yeah, go ahead, George.
It's it sounded as if they were asking for a pick and a poke, you know, oh, and and while we have the equipment here. Here, how about if we do some grading? Well, yeah, like what grading, you know, what is specifically uh being requested? And I I I don't think I'd move on that until we had.
Yes, right. So so they're not asking for a vote tonight to say, let's go forward. But I I think this is what they're hoping the planning board will consider when it comes up. Again, if, you know. You know, they don't, I apparently they, you know. It sounds to me like they don't want to go ahead and order this heavy equipment, knowing that they were gonna have to do it twice. They would like to know if they could just do it once.
It was always the position that they had to do it twice. Because they were ordered by the Concom years ago to do it.
Yeah.
Or they had, you know, anything from us, so um.
Now, now again, Frank, just just to remind you, so there's no longer Frank McPartland. This is the new engineer that's come on. It's no longer um. It's a a Stamsky and McNary in the. In the in the contract. So, yeah, they changed, they changed horses midstream here. Um, so it's no long, it's not Dylanson Roy any longer, but it's now. Stamsky McNary in the contractor. Uh, the engineer that I'm talking to is a is a gentleman named Dan Carr. Um, so and again, I'm just touching base with him, connecting with him, and this is, you know, he's relaying the applicant's wishes to me and. Me to you.
Okay, great. Um, wayfinding.
Okay, let me pull up uh what I have here. So we had a meeting the other day. The um, so they're moving into their survey and um stage. Uh, and they um are and they're setting it up just like we did in the master plan and the um housing production plan. Uh, stakeholder meetings and uh did starting a survey. A couple of suggestions we're looking at is. Um, I got the okay for them to have a table at our meeting and town voting. Um, they may even come out this Saturday to uh um. Uh, stay a field to um for the Little League and softball opening day ceremonies. Uh, parade at nine o'clock. And so we'll see, you know, they they're trying to get the um. Uh, man or or person power to get down there. This now, they had a design consultant in. And uh, this I I'm I'm, oh, let me see, I gotta share my screen here. Uh, and I will show you. Does this work? Can you see this that sign now? On my screen?
No, not yet.
Turn the TV off.
Yeah, sorry. Big Bang's on. What do you want? So it's coming in.
I thought it was Jerry Springer.
No, no, it's Big Bang Theory. I I watch Smart TV.
Jerry was a smart man.
All right, you should be seeing my concepts here. Why is this showing up?
Yeah, it says we're viewing your screen, but it's.
Yeah.
There we go.
There it is, okay.
And you can probably go to full screen there, too.
Yeah, all right, let's see. They go figure out how to do that.
Hmm, that probably wasn't it.
No, I'm trying. You've got so many things up on my screen here. Oh, here it is, okay. All right, how's that? Better?
Definitely better.
Okay. Uh, so uh, what I'll also show you too is a a um a map. That they, so this is the, you know, the. Uh, different, I'm trying, I gotta get rid of you guys here. Here we go. Uh, these are the different types of signs. This will be a welcome gateway, which I believe they have six points. I'll show you the map just after this. Uh, these are traffic directional signs, informational kiosks, recreational kiosks. Recreational area entrance or trailhead, and then trail markers. Uh, so now basically you'll see the same things in different. So here you see. No. Oh, yeah, so here they're just, and again, nothing's written in stone here. These are all concepts. These are design concepts. So here you see the tree, this tree treaty which is important to Lancaster, right? The old alma, you guys know better than me. Uh, so we're using that as kind of a like a branding or symbol or logo. Uh. And along with this color and infrastructure type. This is, I I believe they said that this is the more. Uh, the infrastructure, aside from the design, this would be the more expensive type of. Hardware, if you will, you know, the granite granite markers here. The uh brushed metal, black metal, matte metal poles, steel poles. Uh, now through the same ideas, only moving into now you have this kind of canopy look. Uh, I think that is that they were, I'm told that is to, again, this was a design consultant that they sub out to. To kind of give a um. Life to the to the signs and what the information that they got back, you know. So this is supposed to um. Symbolize the mucolic and the rural nature of Lancaster. Tree canopies, I guess, and the cost of green is would reflect that kind of recreational or forest look. Um, then we move on to. A less expensive structure, but using just now, we're just kind of mixing and matching here. We're going to use. Thing with the forest green, the tree, but you can see the 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 hardware is a little less pricey. And then we go down to, okay, yeah, so here's the explanation of that, so. Uh, option one, black metal posts with granite footings or white painted wood posts with granite footings, okay? So whereas the the white painted posts with granite footings would be the less expensive option. Two, option budget two, traditional paint printed metal sign, whitewater standard metal posts. Use tile seal, a Beaman oak, that's it, the Beaman oak. So this would be the. Less expensive, you know, this is basically in Europe um. Sign infrastructure to to get these signs up.
Hey, Brian, who is the decision maker on this? Because I don't think it's the planning board, but who is?
Well, uh. I think it is the plan. I mean, the planning board can be. I mean, you know, Kate gave me the lead on to do this and uh. Um, there's no, there's nothing in the in the, this is not a a um statutory thing. We would make this recommendation. I think the planning board. George is waiting to get back in here. The planning board, I think, would would make this recommendation to the select board. And it's just a, now, of course, uh, this is just a design concept. Now, we would have to take these, whatever design is is accepted. We don't have to go to town meeting. Uh, I think we we could, as a staff, we could make this, I mean, as a staff person. Working with the planning board, I could take your recommendation and go to Kate and say, this is what we've decided on, and I don't think that there would be. Um, an issue with that. This is. You know, I think that she would accept. I'm not gonna put words in her mouth. She's not here. I think that that would be perfectly acceptable. To um, you know, to get this recommendation. And of course, now we're going out to get public opinion on it as well. Like I said, they're doing surveys. And they they're gonna be doing stakeholder information. So all that feedback is gonna be um taken in by the consultant. Present and presented presented to me. And George is on the advisory committee as well. So, you know, he's he's on this. That that is the process.
With those of you, hold on a second. With those of you who have noise going on in the background, please turn it off. It's very disturbing to listen to and it's gonna make it impossible for people watching the stream later. Sorry, George, you were saying?
Yeah, I I was just off of one thought. Um, honestly, I don't think that the Beaman Oak. Um, resonates with more than, you know, a couple of handfuls of people in town. You know, obviously, the the most senior folks in town would remember it, but. Um, Beaman Oak is history. So if we if we use the town seal. I think it it would certainly be more recognizable, but, you know, whatever whatever choices are made. I I think it's, you know, it's it's a good thing to have the signs as long as we can afford to put them up.
Yes, and I think again, George, this is, you know, this is just a uh, you know, a design person that's just kind of throwing things together. Um, you know, and I think that she was. Kind of being informed by. Um, some of the input that Michelle and Claudia have gotten from us so far, but again, there's a long way to go. This grant does not need to be spent out by this June due. If this grant can be spent, I, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm mixing it up with housing production plan. Um, yeah, so I mean, okay, so. I I suggest, you know, I'm I thought that was in the design concept to use this the the tile seal. I think that they, the samples of the town, I guess the town seal is not a consistent thing. There's there are some images of the tile seal that have some background noise in it, others that are just solid. So I don't think that they had a. What is the official tile seal? You know, I think in general it's one thing, but they are not, certainly not against or not. Advocating to not use the tile seal. So that very may way may well be the way to go. And again, if anyone on this on this board has any ideas about, I I thought it would be cool to use. Just sixteen, what was it, sixteen thirty-six, sixteen thirty-eight? What is the number? Our corporation date, sixteen thirty-six, right?
Sixteen fifty-three.
Is it sixteen fifty-three? Okay, yeah, you're right, sixteen fifty-three.
Sixteen thirty-six is Harvard.
Harvard, okay, that's I I get my alumni and my working time mixed up. Just kidding. Um, okay, yeah, so I mean, I thought it'd be just cool to just emphasize that number, sixteen fifty-three. I thought. I don't know, someone seems to be agreeing with me. Um, it's simple. It says something. It's an important thing. These concepts are not, certainly not um a closed deal, you know.
I like it. I mean, sixteen fifty-three, we could call it the mother town. As we see in the textbooks, I mean, there are so many different ways to go. Um. I'm even thinking about like that first sign that's on your screen right now. We leave the traditional signs that are on the town borders. And then go with the directional signs, which is the second sign in. That says, hey, if you're looking for the police department, it's that way. If you're looking for the fire department, it's that way. If you're looking for the library, it's that way. I I personally like those and leave the traditional, but that's just me.
Sure, I want to, I I also have a map, Regina. Um, that shows that has a legend that shows, you know, suggestions where these signs would actually go in town.
And I love that, but now we're back to the walking thing. Because if you're driving, you're not gonna see that.
Right, okay, so I don't know if you guys want any more discussion over these design concepts. Again, they were a long way from final, but I don't know if you have any important, like if we like one more than the other, and I can certainly give that to. Uh, consultants. Um, but other than that, I can move on to. Um. Another, did the, I think I want to show you the. There it is, the map. Okay, so as you can see, um, if we can remember. So the the welcome sign, as you can see, number three. But that is the welcome to Lancaster. So just overall, this is. This is a map showing the different signs, the different types of signs we were looking at and where they would be. So. Like the open space and recreation, that was the, I don't know if I can get it back up. Okay, so uh, well, let's see, let's do the welcome sign. So you've got one seventeen, one ten. Uh, coming under the railroad bridge, I guess, and on Sterling. I was talking to somebody today who thought that that. This sign might clash with the big welcome to Sterling sign going the other way. Uh, and the suggestion might be it may be better if it was around the corner here, but I I don't know. You guys think of that? That didn't mean much to me because I haven't really gone down that part of town too much. Uh, and of course, there's, and then you got. The three and two here coming in from Lemonster. And one coming down from Shirley. That that's that's at the road to be there, right?
Um, I would tend to agree with Regina that the existing, you know, state standard welcome to Lancaster signs. On the main roads are completely fine at the town line. If there's any place where we don't have one of those. Then we could add something, but otherwise. I I don't see a big demand to upgrade the existing signs that we have. Where.
They're already welcome to man Lancaster signs in these locations or some of these.
They say entering Lancaster.
Oh, you tell, oh, the state, those, okay.
The state standard signs. Yeah, if we have a state standard sign, then why do we need to take it down and put up a different one? That doesn't make any sense to me.
I don't think you would take it down, no, because I see like. I know coming down one eleven with the pepper, we have a welcome to Pepper will sign the state sign, but then after you have. Another, you know, you have a another welcome to Pepper sign, you know. I think that's common. Um, I think you see up at Bolton, if you're coming down one seventeen, coming at the Bolton from. The four ninety-five area, I think you see that. I don't think. Is it redundant? I don't know, maybe, but I don't I don't think that there's, I I mean, personally, I don't think it's um. Uh. The, you know, a waste or a waste of money to have this, you know, a a wayfinding. Again, the 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 state sign is one thing, yes, but having the welcome to Lancaster in this kind of branded. Type of setting, you know, I I don't know. That's up to the people in Lancaster, of course, but I don't. That's um, you know, an awful thing.
Yep. Well. And not not that big a deal in the scheme of things. So do we have anything we need to do on this right now?
No, I'm just. I'm just kind of giving you an update of where the project is. Um, I I can, it's yeah, it's probably be better if. You guys got all these concepts in the map and you can kind of look and see what signs are going where. It might be good to get your feedback in terms of what, you know, where where she's putting the recreational signs, where she's putting the. Kiosk, the informational kiosks, or the directional signs. You know, I, it's gonna be hard to go back and forth on the screen here, trying to match up. The concepts that I was showing you in those, but that's that's essentially where we are. Only to say, just to repeat that. Um, the. You know, the the outreach. Phase of this project is getting underway. Uh, so when you vote and you're gonna be at town meeting, uh, and if any of you guys are playing Little League this year or softball. Um, you will see the presence at those events and we'll certainly find others. Maybe they'll come, they'll probably come to the um. Uh, our community forum on the fifth at the church, you know, and I'm sure there'll be others, but. Um, that's, and then the, you know, they're continuing their stakeholder interviews as well, and the survey is gonna be released. So we're hopefully, we're gonna be able to, and Wayne, I believe, has offered to use his, uh, to offer his, share his um. His email list of the responses he's got from, you know, his, he's compiled a pretty good emailing email list. But uh, from from his website, from um. For uh from from his website, from our master plan website, that, you know, of course, we own anyways. But uh, you know, we will certainly take advantage of that.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, I have, oh.
Regina, you gotta use the remote on in the background. Either that or come up with a laugh track that syncs to us, which could be worthwhile.
Sorry.
So uh well, the one correspondence I have is that our friends from um. What is the preliminary plan we had when I first came on?
Were the guys at Go?
No, Hawthorne Hill.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so they will be coming forth with their definitive subdivision plans uh on June tenth.
We're gonna have a busy night.
Yes, it's gonna, you know, yeah.
Well, maybe we can ask the governor to continue or something. Now we'll be back to regular meeting dates.
Yeah, okay.
So, oh, um, and this is for the the board members. Just start thinking about your summer schedules, only because if there are times when I know we're not gonna have a quorum because of vacations. It's always good to know that in advance. So just, you know, just just be mindful of that as we come into the summer season. Okay, um.
Oh, and I might be taking a vacation on the week of May thirteenth.
It'd be a perfect week to take a vacation. We're not doing anything.
Exactly.
See if you can stay away until after the twenty fifth, when that subdivision expires.
Yeah, okay. But that's not in stone yet, but I think that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay, great. Well, that sounds really good. Um, new business, you mentioned you had some.
No, maybe it was that, maybe the new business was the uh definitive subdivision.
Okay, and um, the guys on White Pond Road, have they done anything? Have they now figured?
From the, no, they haven't said anything yet, but that, you know, the the sub the A and R. Proposal is is here, that will also be on the this June tenth meeting. So they have that A and R, no, no, I'm sorry. The flex. Uh, proposal, the flex.
Yeah, we we can't hear that without a legal opinion. Because they wanna build residential in an enterprise zone, and they're trying to cite a section of the zoning code that does not apply. So especially given everything else we have going on the tenth. I don't really wanna get into that until they can come up with something that council says, yes, you can do this, because I think the plane reading is you have to go to the ZBI.
You're right. My only question is. You know. They have an application, uh it has to, you know, and it came in after for them to be on this. Meeting, but it has to be on the next meeting, you know, um, is it, can it be considered? Uh, you know what I'm saying, Frank?
Well, that's not.
Get on an agenda, like.
We can put it on an agenda. I I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think we can do anything with it.
Right, I mean, exactly. I'm not, you know, saying we have to approve it or anything, but I'm just saying, I think that they, you know, if you submit a. Um, an an application with five days, you know, at least five business days before a meeting, it needs to get on that agenda.
Is this for A and R or everything?
This is for any application proposed, any any, yeah, any any application for development.
Okay.
Most likely.
Okay.
But I mean, I will definitely, I will definitely, I you know, I I do want to follow up with this and see what, you know, if council or anyone else has. My planning network has any thoughts on how how do you approach this? Do you kind of head it off? You know, as a, can I call them and say, hey, listen, it looks like there's gonna be an issue with this. It doesn't, I don't see how it. Matches in in flex development. Are you, you know. Do you wanna reconsider coming to the board, or do you want to, you know, that that I don't think there's anything that.
I I don't see it as a valid application. I mean, that's like my saying I wanna put a convenience store on my lawn. Well, that's all great, but zoning doesn't permit it. We can't bring that to the planning board.
Yeah. Okay, let me follow up on that, Frank, and um.
I just figure it's gonna save them a lot of time and effort, rather than coming to us and being told the same thing and then having to, you know, start again.
Exactly. No, I I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay. Great. Anything else on uh anyone's mind? George, Regina? You're both muted, so you can't say anything. So in that case.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
There we go. George, you wanna second that?
Second.
I'm not hearing any discussion, so. George. George, vote.
Yes.
Regina?
Yes.
Frank, yes, so we stand adjourned at nine twenty P M.